Now streaming live on YouTube.
Good to go.
All right, I would like to call the Orange County Board of Supervisors April 28th meeting to order. If everyone would please join me in Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
That doesn't work nearly as good on Zoom.
No, it does not. So, all right. I know of no changes, deletions, additions, or anything to the agenda. Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. All right, we have no special presentations or appearances tonight.
We need, now it's where we're coming from?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my apologies, my apologies. District one, Mr. Johnson.
I'm coming from my home at 13451 Albano Road, Barbersville, Virginia.
Mr. White?
I'm at my home on Berry Run Road in Orange, Virginia.
Mr. Goodwin?
I am at my home at 11464 Rapidan Road in Orange.
Boy, that video feed really jumped around. Mr. Frame?
I'm at 103 Woodland Trail, my home in Locust Grove, Virginia.
I am at my home at 33 Pier Point, New Bern, North Carolina. All right, at this point, the consent agenda, if I could have a motion?
Bill moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, new business. Mrs. Simpson, the appointment of the county administrator as clerk to the board.
Yes, sir, Mr. Tamara, members of the board in front of you is a resolution to appoint Theodore Voorhees, our county administrator, as clerk to the Board of Supervisors. As I indicated in my memo, this would be for a term through the organizational meeting next year, and it would, or until such time a subsequent appointment is made, and it would supersede all previous appointments, including your appointment as clerk for the interim county administrator.
All right, very good. Okay, motion by Mr. Frame, second? Second by Mr. Goodwin, roll call vote, is that necessary for this?
Looks like Tom saying no.
But Tom, I forgot to hit the unmute, no, it's not necessary.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Any other additional county administrator appointments, Mrs. Simpson?
Yes, contained in the board packet as well is a list of five appointments for the county administrator, one of them being clerk to the board, which has already been addressed. The other is appointment as the local Board of Social Services, appointment to the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development, appointment to the Rapidan Regional Commission, and appointment to the Thomas Jefferson Area Community Criminal Justice Services Board. And all of these are representatives for Orange County, but are positions typically held by the county administrator.
Very good.
Bill moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, passes unanimously also. And then, Mr. Hilton Brand, the Orange County Airport Cares Act Grant Opportunity.
Did you miss see?
Yes, we have a
All right, yes. A request for a nonprofit organization to apply for a community development block grant, Mrs. Simpson.
Yes, members of the board, I forwarded you a copy of the letter of interest from the nonprofit organization, just in an effort to keep that the organization, you know, to protect their identity at this time. But we did receive a letter of interest, it is from a local nonprofit organization. They're interested in applying for a CDBG grant. The proceeds of the grant would be used to provide low-income families with assistance that they request during the COVID-19 pandemic. So based on the little bit of knowledge we have, the county would have to serve as the applicant for the CDBG grant, and it would be a pass-through organization to the nonprofit, the nonprofit would then have its own internal application process whereby families in Orange County could apply for assistance for hardships related to COVID-19, and they would be considered and awarded to Orange County families on a sliding scale basis. So again, we would have to serve as the applicant, we would be the pass-through organization to the nonprofit. And I wanted to open that up for discussion among the board this evening. As I mentioned in my cover memo, if this is something that the board is interested in proceeding with, I would recommend development of a memorandum of understanding between the county and the organization to limit staff involvement and staff time. We could require that the organization prepare the grant application and be responsible for the subsequent reporting requirements that come along with the CDBG grant if it's awarded.
All right. Very good, any discussion?
Well, just basically to follow up on what Allison said, that's, I don't have, I'm completely supportive of the grant application and the county acting as a, as in its proper role as the pass-through, but as Allison says, particularly right now with the, with our the burdens that are on staff right now with, with what we're already dealing with, that really needs to be something the applicant takes care of with a, you know, a minimum amount of county staff involvement. So, other than that one bit of reserve, I would, I would support the, having the application go forward.
Mr. Chairman, also to follow on to what Mark was saying, I think we should also ask the applicant to propose a set of controls and other type of measures to assure that the, the use of the money is as prescribed by the terms of the grant, if any, as, as well as that they act as a fiduciary over the money in some fashion. I don't know that there's a set, set of rules that exist, but again, rather than have our staff need to develop those, I would, I would think it would be in our interest and their interest that we upfront get them to recognize that they have responsibility to administer that money appropriately, and we would want some checks and balances to, to that end. If, assuming that's compatible with the conditions of the grant.
Yes, and probably it wouldn't hurt to contact, staff, contact the regional commission. I believe they already have those parameters set up on a regular basis so that frees our staff up and make sure that everybody meets those goals.
And it should be incorporated in, in the terms of any memorandum of agreement or whatever we do execute with the, with not-for-profit, it seems to be.
I, I believe that the, the applicant is, has been in, in touch with, with the regional commission, and I think they're aware of, of that, so. So yes, what Mr. Crozier said.
At this point, we're just giving a go-ahead, we are not actually making the vote to apply for this.
Um, I didn't really form a motion because I, I wanted to get the board's thoughts first, but if it's something that I can get a consensus of the board, we could work with the county attorney and Stephanie Strabar, Director of Management Services also has volunteered to help form the memorandum of understanding, but I think that would be the first appropriate, or the appropriate first step. Because if we can't reach an agreement of terms in a memorandum of understanding, it may be that we, we can't move forward.
Well, how about this, if we, if we can get, come to terms on the memorandum of understanding with a consensus, we go ahead, move forward as long as those terms are met, because with this being an emergency-type of funding grant that they're looking for, rather than having to wait for us to meet at whatever two-week interval, we could just go ahead and approve it, as long as these parameters were met.
Fine with me.
Yeah, I think that's something that makes appropriate.
Yep. All right.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is a consensus that staff can move forward with negotiating the terms of the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding with county attorney and other staff, and if it's agreeable with the nonprofit organization, then we don't need to bring it back to the board. We can move forward with the grant, then beginning the grant application.
That is correct.
Yes. I, I'll just ask Tom, we don't need a formal vote on this to, to apply for this grant?
No, we don't need a formal vote to do the application. At some point, y'all would need to make a formal vote to approve the, if we decide, if it is granted, if they receive the grant, at some point, we'd have to have a motion to approve the executing of the agreements. We need to head not sign for
I'll concur then.
All right, very good, is that everything you need, Ms. Simpson?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, Mr. Hildebrand, the Orange County Airport Cares Act grant opportunity.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is pretty straightforward issue. As my memo stated, I was contacted by FAA, this stimulus money, so to speak, was bundled into the first round of, of funds that Congress appropriated. And there was a section of money that was earmarked to the airport. So, what, what the FAA, and this is, the FAA is a clearinghouse for this section of money. There's a $30,000 grant available to us with no local match. I've read all the documents, I see no downside. So, bring this in front of the board, and as you can see, my proposed action is to allow staff to apply for the grant, and if the grant is, if the application is acceptable and the grant is offered, to allow staff to execute.
Bill moved, second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. All right, now we're to old business. And county attorney, Mr. Latchney, adoption of ordinance for continuity of government operations.
Right, Mr. Chairman, as you recall, we, at the last meeting, we had public hearing that we opened on this. And it, it's really two separate issues. The first one was, if you remember, we adopted an emergency ordinance on March 24th, allowing these, these electronic meetings, and we have to by state code ratify that adoption. And then I also drafted a couple of changes to that ordinance, so we have new version of it that I'm asking the board to adopt tonight, the new version, if you recall. The primary difference was we added some language extending due date. So if something, for example, a zoning case was going to ready to expire on a due date, it, we, we suspended those due dates during the dependency of this Corona issue. So with that, I'll answer any questions anyone has.
Does anyone have any questions? And if not, go ahead and hear a, a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Were there, were there any public comments? Because Allison would need to read those first.
Right, Mr. Chairman, we did not receive any written public comments relative to this public hearing. So at this time, it would be appropriate for you to officially close the public hearing and then look for a motion from the board.
Okay, public hearings officially closed, I will look for a motion. Okay, that was Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Frame, all right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Okay, and this takes care of both motions, correct, Mr. Latchney?
That's how I interpreted what you did, yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, uh, next under old business is adoption of ordinance for tax rates for calendar year 2020. Mrs. Bradley? Did we have any comments on this?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to recap the fact that it was a reassessment year, and we calculated our equalized tax rate for real estate at 72 cents. The rates that are being proposed are a separate fire and EMS district levy as well as the regular real estate tax, and the two of those do total the 72% equalized rate. The regular real estate rate proposed is 61 cents, and the fire and EMS district levy is 11 cents. The only other change in the rates was for mobile homes, which follows the real estate rate and will be at 61 cents. The rest of our rates for personal property remain unchanged from last year.
All right, very good, Ms. Simpson, any comments from the public?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments relative to the tax rates.
Okay, I will close a public hearing for that then. Any board comment? All right, entertain a motion.
Bill moved, second.
All right, Mr. Frame, Mr. Goodwin, roll call vote, Mrs. Simpson.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
All right. Uh, the next one on our agenda is the adoption of operating in capital budget for fiscal year July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. Mrs. Bradley?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to review some of the highlights of the proposed budget. Number one is that we did create a new fire and EMS fund. The main source of revenue for that, of course, is the 11 cents in the district wide levy. We also, in the proposed budget, have four major capital projects that are proposed for financing, totaling $14,962,000. Those capital projects have associated debt service, and that is also included in the proposed budget. The consolidated budget totals $124,273,320. And when you take out the capital projects to have a better comparison with the current year's budget, it's about a two and a half percent increase.
All right, very good, thank you. Mrs. Simpson, we received one comment on this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cameron and members of the board, we've received one written comment from Ann Klotner, Executive Director at Legal Aid Works. She provided a two-page letter, which has been emailed to the Board of Supervisors. Her comments will be reflected in the minutes. But in short, she thanked the board for the opportunity to request funding and the board's consideration of funding, and just reminded the board that they were asking for level funding this year of only $3,500, and then recapped the eligible population in Orange County to receive benefits from Legal Aid Works as an organization.
And this was the only public comment, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
You approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, um, any other board comment regarding the?
Yeah, I would just ask Brenda, what did we fund them this year?
$3,500.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that we understand there was a revised schedule for this item, and make sure that the board is aware that this does include the elimination of the state recordation tax and some additional related expenditure reductions.
That is correct, everyone is aware of this, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Yes, indeed, thank you. All right, at this point, roll call vote, please.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Very good. Six D is adoption of ordinance amendment to extend the due date for the first half real estate taxes. County attorney, Mr. Latchney?
Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, at the last meeting, we opened a public hearing. This is a, an ordinance change that would move our tax due date from July, from June 5th to June 20th, and then on top of that, extend a 30-day grace period where somebody could pay all the way till July 20th and not be subject to any penalties or interest. And so
This, the one time.
One time, and it specifically says it's a one-time and does not extend beyond this particular tax payment schedule.
All right.
So, any questions anybody has?
Anybody have any questions of the county attorneys?
No.
All right, any public comment on this, Ms. Simpson?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, close the public hearing, and
You approve.
Okay, second? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Very good, item seven is Department Director Constitutional Officer Reports, I'm showing none. Item eight is the county attorney's report.
Mr. Chairman, and, and I don't know if Mike is on, Mike LaCast, but this is a an ordinance that Eric actually in our office drafted up, working with Mike LaCast, and it has to deal with when we wind up impounding animals. And basically what this is, is it allows us to collect a surety bond so that we're not getting stuck with the cost to take care of these animals that we, that we wind up seizing and pounding. So, that, like I said, this is a request from the sheriff, I don't know if Mike's on, if he wants to speak to it, but we drafted it, and, and the sheriff's department is happy with this language. And so if the board is in agreement with it, oh, there, I see Mike. And so, Mike, do you want to comment on this?
Sure, so, I mean, this basically comes about because we had a seizure of a number of horses a few months ago before the coronavirus hit. And out of all the horses that we seized, one of them ended up being pregnant. And the seizure was granted to the county at the general district court level, and the owner appealed to circuit court. Under the way it was before, the county, the county, the Commonwealth's attorney had to ask the court to appoint the surety bond to cover our costs. Essentially, it costs $500 a month for us to board this horse. And, of course, the coronavirus hit, and I don't know that a surety bond was issued by the court because they didn't have time to hear it. And with that being the case, basically, we're on a hook for all the money to care for this horse until we finally get it through court. This ordinance follows state law, which allows the county to draft this, and as such, we don't have to ask the court for this bond. And the money in this bond would be used to pay for the animals that are seized, and any that's left over is then given back to the owner of the animals at the time that the court case is done.
Okay, very good, any questions for Mr. Latchney or Major LaCast? No, all right.
Mr. Chairman, just a question of county attorney. If, if the owner refuses to post such bond, what are the remedies at that point, if any, as you see it?
If the owner refuses to post, well, the way I interpret it, we, he would be required to do so, I guess we could, I mean, I guess in theory, we would still get a court order, but the thing is, it's mandatory.
As I posted that same question, Mr. White, to the Commonwealth's attorney, and I certainly can't speak to her or speak for her at this point, but it's my understanding that if they don't post the surety bond, that they cannot go forward with their appeal.
But it sounds like we've been potentially end up back in court.
Yeah.
As, okay, all right. I mean, there, there is, there is a recourse, that, that really was my question.
Yes, I'm pretty sure there is, yes, sir.
All right, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a, a motion.
Bill moved, second.
Okay, Mr. Latchney, does this need to be roll call or?
No, this is, is authorized to be advertised for, for public hearing.
Not a problem, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right, thank you, sir, thank you, Mike. Item nine is the county administrator's report, Mr. Voorhees.
Nothing to report at this time.
All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, board comment. Let's start at District one, and we'll roll right on through.
I don't have any comment at this time.
All right, very good, sir, District two.
My only comment really is to, to thank the staff and Glenda in particular, and, and others for all their work on the budget. That rock seemed like was rolled up the hill, and we thought we had it at the top, and it rolled back on us, and we rolled it up again. After about half a dozen iterations of that, we're here tonight, so, special thanks to her for, to Glenda for that, and also to Stephanie for the CIP. I think you all have copies now of CIP, and at some future meeting, we will be addressing that, and so this is always a busy time of the year to try to get these financial documents in order, and we, we made it through despite the curveball that we were handed back in, in my box of Corona, I'm celebrating that curveball, so. Just wanted to recognize you guys and thank you for your, your effort doing less than ideal logistical times, shall we say.
Thank you, Mr. White.
District three?
Yes, I actually, I forgot to do it at the last meeting. Just before the last meeting on Saturday afternoon, I noticed the fire truck proceeding up Oxley Lane beside my home, and then suddenly discovered there were about 100 cars behind it, having a Corona convoy. So they came, teachers being led by a fire truck, came and paraded around through the area, and I just want to thank those folks for brightening up everybody's day.
Very good. District five?
You always hear in the press of all the nursing homes that are having problems with the COVID-19. Orange County nursing, health and rehab, and senior living are still coronavirus-free.
Very good. Only comment I have is I would like to thank all county staff for diligently, diligently working through all of this mess. I understand that it becomes a little challenging sometimes dealing with some of the public. They're frustrated as well, but the dedication and the good work that everybody They're frustrated as well, but the dedication and the good work that everybody is doing is not going unnoticed, and it is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. All right, informational items are there for you. Are there any appointments to boards, commissions, and committees?
Yes, I'd like to appoint David Kraus to another term on the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay. Other?
Yeah, I'd like to reappoint Chief Mort for the REMS. Also want to reappoint Martha Nicholson to the Social Services Advisory Board. And while we're at it, if nobody's got any complaints, since we need a replacement for Charles Bowman, that was James Reed, yes, said he's willing to fill in the vacancy. And so if he's willing to give it a shot, I'm willing to throw his name in.
All right, very good. And what vacancy was up, sir, for the record?
Mr. Reed would take Charles Bowman's place on
Bay State.
The Virginia, yeah, Bay State.
Right, okay, thank you very much. Ms. Simpson, do you have all those recorded?
Yes, sir, David Kraus, Nathan Mort, Martha Nicholson, and James Reed.
All right, I would entertain a motion for approval of those.
Bill moved.
Second. All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Any calendar items? Don't believe there are. Ms. Simpson, you didn't have anything? Okay, all right, I would entertain one more motion then.
I already did.
Okay, second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Take care.